All right, everyone ready? We all set? All right, where I go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 19th, 2024 Grotten Dunstable Regional School District School Committee Meeting. We are officially called to order, and this is the fourth of our series of superintendent interviews. This evening, we are interviewing Joanne Menard, otherwise known as Joni Menard. And we will not, on the agenda, be discussing the voting structure. We'll do that on the 24th, and we will start our questions as we have the last interviews. I want to bring your attention to the QR code and the survey link up above. Please send in your feedback, or you're definitely wanting everyone's feedback. And I would like to get that feedback turned in by no later than Monday at noon, please. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Joanne in the superintendent's office. And on that note, we'll start the questions.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So our first question. Tell us about yourself and why you chose Grotten Dunstable. Now that you've visited the district, what do you identify as GD strengths, maybe some other weaknesses? What skill set do you possess that will support those strengths or resolve our weaknesses and make us a better district? And what priorities would you include as part of an entry plan for your superintendency?
Okay, I will start to unpack that. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for welcoming me here. I'm honored to be a finalist in the district. I am Joni Menard, and I've had a little bit of an unusual educational journey. And I just wanted to take you, wanted to tell you about my background. So I came from the business world, and I switched over to education. I taught for eight years total, three years in Waukesha Regional School District. And then I went to Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. So you can see I've been in a lot of regional school districts. I went from there to Medway to become a STEM instructional coach at the middle school. From there, I went to Petersham Center School at a lovely K through six school with only 125 students, one class per grade. I was a principal there for four years and decided I really wanted to expand my educational experiences. And I became a six through 12 principal. So I have now been a principal for grades K through 12. I think that gives me a very unique vision. I can see that global view. I know the issues of what principals face at all levels. I lived in their shoes. I, after I became principal, I went on to Holliston Public Schools, which is in the Metro West area of the state. I'm currently the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. I'm in my third year. I just finished my doctoral program last May, which is really exciting. So that was my journey, and I definitely will continue to learn. Told my husband and my family, the day I decide to stop learning is the day I need to retire. So it's a little bit about myself. My core beliefs, I'm telling you why I applied to Grotten Dunstable. My core beliefs align with Grotten Dunstables. That is critical for me. I cannot feel comfortable working in an environment that I do not agree with the philosophies. So some of that is, you know, one is you have embraced the growth mindset. And I told you just about my educational journey that I want to keep learning on. Eliminating inequities for all students. I have positioned myself to join a lot of different groups around the state. I'm part of Influence 100, which is a statewide organization that we're looking at and correcting inequities within our own districts. And they're having us go through our own personal struggle and how to get there. So I've been on a journey in that way, too. I can tell you some other examples of how we've eliminated inequities for students. We did a creative, fluid block scheduling for K through two in elementary school because we were dealing with low levels of reading, like way before, way below grade level. And we knew, we know we needed to address that. So the teachers and I collaborated together and developed a whole schedule that addressed those issues to close the achievement gap. In the high school where I was at, in the middle school, I was tasked with changing the environment. The principal prior to me had not dealt with inequities and intolerances and bias within the school. When I was being hired, I was told that was my biggest task to correct. So hopefully, I'll tell you about that. I'll make sure to tell you a little bit more about that in my interview. Brought in the meaning of success. I'm looking at all academics and our social emotional learning curriculum. That's very important to me and near and dear to my heart. And creating environments for innovation. I personally created STEM classes. I created environments where we can do out-of-the-box thinking, collaboration, regular basis. So those all aligned with me. Being a regional school district, Grotten Dunstable attracted me to you. I've been in Waukesha, Spencer East Brookfield, and Petersham was part of, not a region, but a superintendency union. I was at Gil Montague, which is also a regional school district. Another thing that attracted me to Grotten Dunstable is the size. And I mean this endearingly. I love the size of this district. That is my sweet spot because I feel like as a leader, I can make a true impact and a difference for students. So that I feel very comfortable about. But it's also large enough that it has a lot of supports for students, and you can see that in what you've chosen to support. So I'm very much with that. I could see the schools I went to today, that your vision is definitely living and breathing through your teachers. I saw a lot of excitement, got to talk to a lot of students and teachers, a lot of questions from them, a lot of very thoughtful questions. And I could see a lot of give and take and a lot of information flowing and communication with them. My entry plan, my entry plan would be coming in and listening and asking questions. So I'd be really looking at asking people about the strengths, the weaknesses, and the opportunities and threats about our teaching and learning, about our policies, about our protocols, and really diving deep into that. And that work would, those answers would drive my work of what I started with.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roseanne?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you describe your experience when implementing, conducting a curriculum audit and implementing new curriculum initiatives? And what methods do you use to assess the effectiveness of instructional programs while identifying content areas?
In my role right now, I was tasked with DESI curriculum audit. And that was a big task, that you had to gather a lot of information. DESI worked with an agency called AIR, American Research Institute, I want to say. And I had to gather all the data for that, prepare for that, and then I had to look at the results of that. And from that, we have made movement in curriculum. It was pointed out that we did not have consistent district-wide curriculum maps. I worked with the K through 12 district curriculum coordinators on collaboratively developing the curriculum maps and also our curriculum review process. We had not had a curriculum review done where I am in quite some time. I think the last one was 2011 that was done within our school district. So we took what previously existed, and then we took, DESI has a guideline called Implement. It's about 160-some-page document. We took it down, we Hollistonized it, and we made our own protocols. So that process has been that we bring a group of educators. We're currently in a math curriculum review. I'll give you an example. We bring educators pre-K, we have preschool educators all the way through the high school, so we can hear all their voices. It's predominantly teachers. We do have some administrators. I sit there as a participator. I, the curriculum coordinator runs it. I'm very much about empowering others to run. I kind of want to sit in the back. But we collaboratively created our vision for mathematics in Holliston, what student engagement looks like, how we could achieve that. We went through and looked at our gaps in the vertical and horizontal alignment. We looked at our achievement in MCAS, and then we decided what pieces are we missing? So that drove us to determine what kind of resources are we looking for. We also had other considerations. We have a modestory program. We have French immersion program, and we have a exploding multi-language learner program that we have a lot of Level Ones. So we have great needs in our district. And then, of course, special education was considered also. We looked at, the one thing I caveat, I did say is that we need to only look at curate-rated materials. For those of you guys who don't know, those are Massachusetts teacher-rated materials, how they're aligned to the state standards. So then, the different levels of teachers got together and really kind of researched those resources and together decided on what resources they wanted to pilot. They decided it's not top-down. They have piloted it. We also had math forums to inform the community of what's going on all the step along the way. We've had multiple school committee presentations to keep everybody informed, and it's also been in my newsletters. So it's really been a transparent process. We've also been through a NEASC audit, and we've had to make adjustments from curriculum adjustments within that, too. So I've had a lot of experience with all of those. So the DESI curriculum audit, we're developing curriculum reviews and implementing them, all the way to looking at NEASC audits also. We review those and see how effective they are using DESI-created rubrics. Those are guidelines that we use to look at those curricular resources. And we're looking at it through an equity lens and how students can see themselves looking really for those windows and doors and opportunities for all students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Joni. So I want to briefly lay out a real scenario that you'll be facing if you become the superintendent of the Grotten Dunstable Regional School District, and here how you will respond to this scenario. Wages and benefits make up approximately 70% of our school district's budget, which is pretty typical. Most unions and districts are settling for between 2.5% to 3.5% annual raises. We have step-in lane movement that causes the total growth rate of salaries to be even higher than the negotiated raises. The cost of benefits is growing even faster than wage growth. And in our towns, our local revenues are only increasing at 2.5% based on proposition 2.5 and about half a percent of new growth for a grand total of 3% total revenue growth. This clearly means that expenses are growing faster than revenues. So a few parts to this question. One, have you been in this type of situation previously? Second, given that this is the situation you would be facing as the superintendent of our district for the foreseeable future, what budget would you propose? Level services, whatever the cost, live within local revenue, whatever the cuts, something in between, or why? And then, I guess, the last part to that question, depending on your answer, how do you defend your recommended budget to families with students that might be impacted by your cuts as well as lower-income individuals that feel they're being taxed out of the community?
There's a lot there. Before I answer that question, if I was to become superintendent here, I would develop a proactive approach to anything beforehand. So let me explain what I mean by that. So I would hold regular out-of-district, out-of-school buildings, principal, excuse me, superintendent's chats that I would invite the community to come. It would be very transparent about what's going on and kind of go through the steps of what a budget process is and where we are in those steps. I would also have things in community newsletters. Prior to that, though, I, you know, part of my entry plan is building relationships. So I'd want to meet with those town managers, the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, of course, meet with all of you, get your opinions on where we're at. It takes a lot of moving parts, you know, FinComs, I would want to have relationships built with all of that, town managers, have those conversations. I would also, I'm currently, I used to be the policy chair for MAS S for the state. We wrote a lot of letters concerning budgetary restrictions and constraints for the state. I played a very active role in the legislative part. So I think it would be important for me to build a relationship with senators and representatives also and advocate for Grotten Dunstable. So all of that would be beforehand. Trying to think what you said. I would also work with the principals in the budget process that we would develop priority needs and communicate those to the school committee. And those priority needs would be based on the strategic plan and our vision. Right now, I think Holliston's done an incredible job. We developed a strategic plan. I was part of that with 20-some other people. Our town manager was a critical part of that. Our select board chair was part of that. We really had buy-in from all that. School committee members were on that. So that drives every decision we make. We have four arches. There is communication. There is social emotional learning. There is teaching and learning and talent and resources. So every decision that I would ask what principals would want for their buildings has to be defended by that strategic plan and that vision of the school district, right? But it would be that the expectation is that you're defending why you need that resource for students, right? Every school district across the state has struggled with coming off the pandemic, that we were scrambling to get resources to our students, and we were just, everybody was buying all the digital resources we could, right? Now we need to look at effectively, how can we pull some of those back? What are redundancies? What systems that we already have that replicate that and really get critical about diving deep into that? There should be protocols for making requests. In Holliston, we developed a process for any kind of digital resource. And somebody has to defend why, what standards it would address, how many students, all of that. So a lot of it is defending reasoning. It's not just that this would be a nice thing to have. So all of those protocols would happen beforehand. And what would have to happen, too, all along the way, I would want to have superintendent chats out in the community, and I would ask you to tell me, where are good places within the community? I did those as a principal. I found, when I was principal in Petersham, people came to me, they were able to. At Gil Montague, they did not have the means, so I went to the community. I found out that there were many parents who did not have cars, and a lot of them lived in the apartments in downtown. So I would do principal chats in the community center of downtown. So I would envision to having superintendent chats at locations that I would ask you to help me with defining and having predetermined topics, but then also having opportunities for community members just to ask whatever they want to ask. There needs to be that, that perception from the community that I'm approachable, I'm transparent, I'm working through a process. I've communicated it to the school committee all along the way. And we are relying on what's best for students. If I'm looking at anything that, I'm sorry to go back, you asked if I've lived it, I am living it right now. We are in contract negotiations. We are having to make some hard decisions. I can't get into details because it's active. And, but it's, the landscape right now financially is not pretty for a lot of communities, and it's not pretty for Holliston. It's not, the town itself, you know, is struggling financially, and there's a lot of needs from a lot of different areas. So I do live that right now. What I would base all decisions on, though, would be using that strategic plan. But I also use, I like to think of it as a target and think of a bullseye target. And my main, the main center, the bullseye, is the students' concerns. I'm always keeping the student at the center of every decision. Is that's what's best for students? Is that's what's going to be most effective for students? Then I'm looking at the supports is the next ring, and then finally, operational and maintenance at the outside ring. So if I'm having to look at any kind of cuts, I would like to start from the out and go in, right? I would again back up everything with a strategic plan and a vision and that philosophy of doing that. I would have to look at a combination. You asked me specifically what I would do, right? And it would really be coming in here, if I would come in here and if something wasn't settled yet, excuse me, I would have conversations with a lot of different stakeholder groups. And what do you view as being critical, a critical component for Grotten Dunstable that we supply? What do you view that's a nicety, you know, having those kinds of conversations? Excuse me. But I would also be looking at other things like, I'm in the middle of trying to implement a new curriculum. We're trying to choose a new curriculum. There are grants out there for one-time funds. So if we're looking to make some kind of big purchase to kind of lighten the budget, are there any opportunities for that, right? Can we do something like that? Is there anything we can do with fees for activities? Are there any kind of operational things? Do we have contracts that we can look at? Can we renegotiate contracts, getting creative about that? And is it possible to use any reserves we have? My very, very, very last thing would be looking at cutting any personnel. And that would be a last resort because that directly impacts the students. So I would look at any kind of creative things, and it wouldn't just be Joni making those decisions. It would be me getting a lot of feedback and thoughts and collaborating with a lot of people, the school committee being partnering with you, and having those tough conversations and figuring out what are our priorities and what do we want for Grotten Dunstable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Okay. Education data indicates that students receiving special education services in Massachusetts is 19.3%. As a superintendent, what measures would you take to close the achievement gap between the general education students and special education students, students who receive special ed servicing? How will you monitor the progress of these students?
Thank you. I think we need to look and we need to focus on tier-one instruction first. How can we make that stronger? Because if we make tier-one stronger, we won't have as much tier-two or tier-three. So how can we improve that, right? So what could that be? That could be training on differentiation. It could be training on co-teaching. You know, it'd be a lot of different types of things. I also have a personal belief that inclusion is a feeling, it's not a place. So we need to meet students where they're at. We need to make sure that they feel like they belong here, they are part of Grotten Dunstable. You also asked, how would I know it's working? I can tell you what we do in Holliston. We have diagnostic tools. We have a tool called SAR. We're researching right now iReady and iXL, iReady for the elementary schools, iXL for the top schools, or the, excuse me, six through 12 schools. And we would use that as a measure. The thing about the beauty of something like that, it's not only for diagnostic, it's a tier-two and tier-one support also. So you get a lot of bang for your buck in there, and it really is a huge resource for teachers. They can either have that tool assign something, the support for that student that they need, or the teacher can determine they want to assign something to that, to that student. But you would monitor and see the students' individual growth. Let me give you an example of how I close an achievement gap, and let me kind of tell you how I measured that. So I was in a situation in Petersham, we were seeing a lot of students, I had already referenced, way below reading grade level. So as a staff, we came together and we collectively decided, you know, we, we needed to support them because it's impacting all the other grades and all subjects. So what can we do? So what can we do? Together, we came up with a fluid K through two literacy block. Students were physically moving between the kindergarten and second grade room. It did not mean if you were the struggling student on phonics that you were in the kindergarten room because you kept switching it up to make sure they were comfortable. And it was flexible grouping. And we saw scores fly. And in MCAS, we went from the twenty-fifth percentile to the forty-eighth percentile. We also brought in tier two supports for them. It's called Level Literacy Instruction. And that program itself has monitoring that you can send home to parents too. The beauty about all of these systems, it has a parent component. So you can share with parents exactly what progress their student is making. And they can see what they're still struggling with. And you can have a very thoughtful conversation between a teacher and a family member about that specific student based on data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to share a current situation in our high school with regard to scheduling and class sizes. You may, we have a block schedule at our high school. This comes with certain advantages and disadvantages. At a recent school committee meeting, the administration presented data showing that we had a total of one hundred and forty-seven sections at the high school. Twenty-six of those sections had over twenty-five students with eighteen, having less than fifteen students. The average teacher load at the high school is approximately sixty students per teacher. Do you draw any immediate conclusions from these numbers? Do you support block schedules versus another type of schedule? Why or why not? If the school committee wanted you to evaluate the current schedule for possible changes, tell me about the process you would go through to gather data and present a recommendation. Who would you charge with leading that process? What if there was staff pushback? Because it resulted in staff reductions and teachers having to take on a higher load? How would you handle the objection?
Okay, so there's a lot of parts there. I have an advantage here because I was a high school principal and I had to live that schedule, right? And look at it. So I have a true appreciation and understanding of how that works and what impacts choices can be made. So in Gil Montague, we were a small school district. I'll give you some examples. We got creative when I was a principal there. That in Power School, it would show us two separate classes. If you were looking at that, we, it would show us two separate classes. But we had Latin III and Latin IV combined with the same teacher at the same time. So some of my questions would be, is that existing? Is that happening here? Because that's a common practice of high schools, of high schools to do that. To stave on staff, to still have those strength of your program and offerings, right? Another thing, when you said that, I thought of, Gil Montague, we weren't large. So we got to a point where we wanted to have that strength of program of studies and have some really nice offerings for students. But we realized that we could not offer everything every year. So we communicated to students what year classes would be offered. Okay, so, so is any of that going on? I don't know. So I mean, those would be things I would want to dig into, right? And think creatively about that. That's keeping your, those electives that draw your students in and that they're passionate about. But at the same time, you're being fiscally responsible about how you're offering those. But to me, it's only fair if that's communicated to families and to students of when those would be offered. Okay, nothing's worse than being a student like, I'm so psyched to take this class. I'm going to get in this class. And no, I can't take it because it's not going to be offered, right? So I think that would clearly have to be communicated. You had asked, let's see here. Trying to take notes on what you said. I lived a block schedule where I came from. I live a block schedule where I am. Let me tell you, I have big concerns in Holliston and why it's not working for Holliston. I would have to dig into it deep here. And I would task the principal to do that, the high school principal to do that. And I will tell you the process in a little bit. But in Holliston, we struggle because we have a four-by-four block schedule. And we have a DSB block in the center, and that is not being used effectively. That DSB block is the only opportunity for students to take visual arts, to take performing arts, and for special ed services to be provided. So if you are a special ed student, and if you are a student that loves performing arts, you're out of luck in Holliston. I mean, you should not have to make that tough choice, right? So I, you know, in Holliston, it limits the opportunities for students. We have another situation that I would want to look at if the block schedules like this in Groton Dunstable, is that we have AP classes that will run all year long or three semesters. That also limits a student. Because now you only have so many blocks and you're having to make those hard choices. To me, a student in high school, it's your opportunity to kind of dive into some of your interests and see if that's, that's a passion for you. And we need to offer those opportunities for students. So that's another thing I would want to dig into. Funny you should ask this. Last night at our school committee meeting, the school committee has tasked our high school principal to do a deep dive into looking at our schedule. NIASC, our NIASC report did say that we do need to take a deep look at that. There are a lot of inequities that are being created because of the schedule that we have. There's a lot of missed opportunities for students. He is building a committee, and this is how I think it should be done, because you need to have buy-in. So you need to have representation from the whole high school. And you need to have representation to make sure that you're recognizing all the different departments within the high school. All the departments are critical and, and you need for a well-rounded student. So you need to have views and how each different department is impacted by a schedule. It would be a collaborative process between him and the community members and really looking at what are the advantages that we have with the current schedule? What are the disadvantages? Looking at other schedules out there, going to possibly other schools and seeing how that impacts their students. Really looking at a deep dive. Because as we all know, we should not be changing our schedule at the drop of a hat. It has a lot of different ramifications. It's a domino effect. And so you need to be very thoughtful about it. But it, I would expect them to have reports from that committee that I would get and they would be shared with the school committee and publicly, where we are on that and what the thought process is. What are the advantages? What are the disadvantages? What did they look at? What did they eliminate? What is still in the running? All of that. Any kind of process that goes through, I think it's very important that it is a transparent process as much as it possibly can be with the community. And obviously, the school committee first. You need to know, you guys are taxpayers. You're spending a lot of money on this school. This is the pride of your town. And you need to know that we are being fiscally responsible with your money and looking at what is most effective for our students and making adjustments based on those decisions.
A quick follow-up.
Sure.
When you're talking about that process and you're talking about the importance of a block schedule or scheduling for access to curriculum that they may not have access to now.
Yes.
What is the duration of time that it takes to do something like that and create, and get to implementation?
I think in order to be thoughtful and do due diligence and research and looking at data and diving deep into that, it's not a quick process. It's, you would want the committee to be looking at that over the course of, you know, six months or longer to look at that and be able to spell out those ramifications and being able to defend that and really spelling out, if we do this, what impact does this make? Would we do this, what impact does this make? And in order to give that all information, it's a big, a big process to go through. And you have to think that all thoroughly through. So it's not a quick and easy thing. And it has so many impacts on students that people need to be very thoughtful about it. And there's no right answer for any kind of schedule for any district for a high school. It needs to be, what are the needs of Groton Dunstable students? And how can we best meet those needs? And what resources do we have in teachers? You know, like what, how can we spread our staff out? So it's kind of like a puzzle piece that is not an easy one. You know, it's not a five-hundred-pacer. It's like two-thousand-piece puzzle that you have to kind of jigsaw it all together. So I would not expect a quick turnaround because my expectation would be to do a lot of research and bring us back information from other districts and why that would work for Groton Dunstable or why it wouldn't, and so on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Menard, nice to see you again. Welcome back to Groton Dunstable. How do your educational values influence your approach to improving student achievement? And how would you apply this philosophy in our district? Could you provide an example of how you have implemented this philosophy in a past role to enhance student learning outcomes?
Sure. One of my truths is I need to ensure that there's opportunities for all students. And I mean all students. All marginalized groups, every student that's struggling, every student that is excelling. We need to offer opportunities for all students, right? That's one of my most common beliefs. One of my other beliefs is empowering staff and students. Using student voice to make change. Using staff voice to make change. They're the ones, it's their school. We are here longer than we are at our homes. We need to make a comfortable atmosphere. We need to make it a welcoming atmosphere for all. As instructional leaders, one of my core beliefs is that we need to make sure that we're providing those windows and doors for all students in the resources that we use. They need to see themselves in whatever we're using. Let me give you an example of how I implemented those. In Petersham, you know, I am one that, I would not come in, and it's not Joni's beliefs, it's what does Groton Dunstable believe, right? What is our vision? What is our mission? What are our core values? When I was in Petersham, one of the core values for them was that they wanted a wide breadth of offerings for their students. Remember, this is K through six. And they really valued that we had performing arts. They were doing mindfulness. They were doing yoga. We had music for all students. We had band. We had PE. We had STEM. It was all hands-on. And we had, which one am I missing? Music, I guess? Music, PE, STEM, health, and performing arts and art. And that was, that was really critical for them. Another big ask for that community was, I don't know if anybody knows Petersham. It's a very, outdoors is a key component of their beliefs. They love the outdoors. They love being outdoors. Harvard Forest is located in Petersham. And STEM and nature and all that's critical. So we developed a after-school enrichment program for STEM. And we had so many students do it. And I actually got to teach students again. It was a lot of fun. Did after-school enrichment programs, hands-on programs. Another example of how I show my true beliefs are that we need to have voice. And how I ensure that voice in every school I've been principal and where I am now is that Culture and Climate Club, so your, I was actively asking students, and yes, kindergarten students can give opinions too, all the way, like, what will make this school better for you, okay? And in Petersham, they would give me suggestions like, you know, we want you to come in and be involved in our academics. So I did. I would run literacy groups when I could that, you know, kept me engaged and kept me connected to them. They also said, we want more opportunities to present to our peers. We had weekly all-school meetings where students got to decide what they were going to present to the rest of the school. They got to shine. They got to be proud. Nothing was better than those presentations, right? They wanted more plays. We had more plays. So it was a lot of student voice. At the high school level and middle school level, we had, the middle school level, we had weekly meetings, all-school meetings. And the high school level, excuse me, middle school was bi-weekly meetings. And the high school was weekly meetings. And in those meetings, a lot of it was a given, a back-and-forth conversation about what changes they wanted to see in their school, right? And then what's more important is taking some of those ideas and actually implementing. Because nothing's worse than giving your opinion and then you're just being ignored. And some of those needed to be fun. The high school students had very little opportunities for any kind of pep rallies. You're a high school student, you should be able to have a pep rally, right? They got to have those back. They ran them. I didn't. It was all student-directed. I got to a point where they were running the weekly meetings. I was not. But I played a very active role in that. They came up with ideas of how to make the school more welcoming for students. And they flew them by me and we ran with them. A student came to me and said, you know, Mondays are really hard to come back to school. And I said, they're hard for staff members too. Like, what are your ideas? And she's like, music would be nice to come back into. Okay, let's play music, as long as it's school-appropriate, right? They kept coming up with different ideas to make our school better. That's what makes a school better. You get buy-in, we implement those ideas, could see those ideas taking shape. They, they are part of that school. They feel part of that school. A big part in Gil Montague is that I was tasked when I was hired. And I apologize, I've been so many interviews. Did I already tell this story here? No? Okay, I'm going to go with it again, sorry. I'm sorry, I've like been repeating some of those same stories, so I'll go with it. I took over with a situation that Gil Montague is not very diverse, but intolerances, microaggressions, and bigotry had not been addressed. And staff and students were fed up. You could visibly see it when you walked in that school. It was depressing when you would walk in when I first got there. My first week, there was summer school. There was a student of color came up to me and demanding who I was. And I told her I was the new principal. And she's like, are you just going to ignore all of this like everybody else has? You need to help us out here. I took that to heart. You guys can see, I'm a sixty-year-old white woman, so I knew I wasn't going to be taken seriously. And I have a lot of learning in that area myself. So I went outside and went to an organization called The Collaborative out of North Hampton, which is out that way. They have the expertise. And they worked with my staff to begin with. I'm sorry, let me back up why I did this. Sorry, but that's a really critical part. I was struggling as a principal because I could see I had a really good staff. And I didn't understand why they had not addressed that. I was really uncomfortable. So at a faculty meeting, I'm like, I am struggling to understand, why are you guys choosing to ignore this and not address this? And it came out through our discussion that they had never been trained and they weren't comfortable how to address it. So that's why I got to The Collaborative, sorry. But that's a critical spot. They came in and they trained us on leading for justice standards and then also strategies of how to address that in the moment. There, it's called Speak Up. And there's four strategies that you immediately can deal with it. Like one's interrupt, one's educate, one's echo, and so forth. So what we did, which was a very powerful and very sad at the same time, I knew there were a lot of instances in those four years. So I had staff, I had a big bowl. I had staff and students anonymously write down situations that happened within those past four years. And we put them in the bowl. So then after we got trained as a staff, we were trained on those four strategies. Couple, you know, a pair went up and took something from the bowl, read an actual situation that had happened there, which is very powerful. And then we had to practice those four strategies on each other. They had to get comfortable with using it. And that's not a comfortable thing to do, right? It's an out-of-the-box thing for the staff. It was a very uncomfortable thing. They got to a point, I said, I need you to make sure that you're trying all four strategies. So we did that a lot. And I, after we got done with that and they were like, all right, I can do this. I said, here's the thing. I do not care which of these four strategies you use. And I am recommending that different strategies would work better in a different situation than another. All I care about is you have to address the inequity in the moment. There's no exception. And if you do not do that, you and I will be having a conversation. And if you do not do that, you and I will be having a conversation. I then went to the middle school meeting and the high school meeting and walked all our students through what we had done together as a staff. And I said, now I am charging you, if you feel that any of us, including me, are not addressing this, I need you to come, well, if I did it, they wouldn't have come to me, right? But to come to myself, the assistant principal, or one of the deans, whoever they're most comfortable with, and say, we did not do a good job of that. What a positive change. It was, you could feel it, you could see it. It was a huge shift. Were we perfect? Not at all. But the students knew that we were making an effort and we were trying, right? And we were having those conversations. And we got better as time went on, right? Addressing those in the moment. And that's a really powerful example to me and that will never leave me of embodying my core beliefs of what we need to provide for students. We need to provide that safe spot. And I also, after we did that, staff came up to me and said, I didn't feel comfortable before either. So not only did it impact the students, it impacted the staff. So I always try to embed my core beliefs in anything that we do. And those are just a couple of different examples.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that question, that response was very thorough and so much so that it actually answers my first question.
Oh, awesome. Okay.
So I'm gonna read you the question and then I'm gonna maybe make a suggestion. My first, the first part of the question was, what do you see as being key components to developing and maintaining a strong school community and a supportive school culture that encourages students to work hard and grow in their learning? I feel as though your previous response really covered that. But if there's anything else that you would like to add to that? Or I also would be curious to follow up and ask you, you mentioned with your story that you felt like there was a noticeable change, and so I'm just wondering, how did you measure that?
Thank you for mentioning that because I did not say that. So in Gilmanigew, all of the principals got together with a superintendent and we developed a culture and climate survey.
That's my next question.
Okay, so, oh, okay. So we developed it together, so it was collaborative, it was age-appropriate, you know, it's like a different, had the same premise, but it's obviously different for a kindergartner than a high schooler, right? But we developed that together. It was district-wide that we used all the time. We did that three times a year. And we did that in my first year. It was really depressing and eye-opening that first time I took it. And I thought, what have I gotten myself into, to be honest? I was like, this is a big hill. Am I going to be able to get to the top of that hill or even to a little crest of the hill, you know? And we measured it and we saw huge, huge growth at the end of the school year. And it was so exciting. And, yeah, I think you answered my questions. But I, I would like to say, part of building a strong community, to me, the most important parts are for me to build relationships. For me to build that relationship with all of you, with community members, with staff, with the leadership team. I, one of my core beliefs is empowering people. I'm a very outgoing person, but this is uncomfortable, like, for me to talk about me because this is not stuff that I did. I did it with a team of people working collaboratively. So to go to that point, I think collaboration is key. I think by collaborating with a group, no matter what group you're talking about, you get more buy-in. People are happier about that. And I think it's also very important, a key belief I have, is being as transparent as I possibly can. If you might not agree with me, but you understand my reasoning, and you can always see that I have the student's best interest at the core.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Please tell us about the experiences you've had with collective bargaining on both management and the teacher side of the table. What's the best role for the superintendent? Part of, the other part of the question is, if you needed to make changes in a budget in the middle of an academic year, how would you go about doing so? And how would you communicate the need for these changes to all stakeholders?
Okay. I've had the pleasure, I was, the pleasure of being both on collective bargaining as a teacher twice for Spencer East Brookfield. Both times went to mediation, so it was very interesting and it got quite contentious. So I got to see it being contentious on that side. I am in collective bargaining for the teachers' union currently. And what I see a superintendent's role as being, and I just wanna do a huge shout-out to my current superintendent, she has enabled me to be in a lot of situations that sadly my colleagues at my level are not in. So she has positioned me to be exposed and actively a participant in a lot of things that in a lot of other districts would only be the superintendent. So I have a huge leg up on this. But, so I view the superintendent as being a huge support for the school committee in a collective bargaining role. It's the, collective bargaining is an agreement between the school committee and the teachers' union. The superintendent, you should expect, to me as a superintendent, to provide all data and information you need, any opinions you're asking me for, any guidance that you're asking me for. I'd be present at all meetings, but I would be a quiet participant and a supporter. You also asked me, I'm sorry, if you had a budget, to change the budget mid-cycle or something? To kind of go back on kind of my proactive views on a budget, right? So I would have developed that proactive approach already. And in that proactive approach is that I would say, if at any time we are finding any, halfway through the year, at any point during the year, this has changed, I will come back and communicate it. It'll be communicated at school committee meetings, it would be at superintendent's chats, it would be in superintendent newsletters, I don't even know if I've talked about those. I would have superintendent newsletters using a platform called Some More. I would have those principal chats out in the community and I would have that active discussion. And how I would bring people in that might be impacted by it is, or is explaining the rationale why? And what we would do to support that group or other avenues and trying to think outside the box, is there any other way that we can look effectively within our existing structure that we could maybe support that group that we had to make some cuts from? So I think I answered all your questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi.
Professional development is one key way to support and maintain an impactful, inclusive district culture. And when changes are implemented, all stakeholders should understand how to communicate with our school community about the priorities of inclusivity and accessibility. As the district's leader, how would you ensure that we develop an inclusive culture that is community-wide? How would you communicate information and get all staff on the same page about efforts to improve the inclusivity of our school events, our policies, and our curriculum in a way that fosters positivity and collaboration? And lastly, can you give an example of how you involve staff in an improvement process to address a complex issue? And what were your main considerations as you navigated at the collaborative process?
That is complex. And hopefully I wrote down everything you asked me to talk about.
I'm happy to.
Okay, so we will see. First of all, I think I'm repeating myself, but all, I probably haven't talked about this, so I'm charged with professional development in my role right now. All professional development is directly tied to our strategic plan. So much so that we collaboratively made a PD agenda template. In that template, this is for all PD, all schools, it has the topic, it has what strategic initiatives of our strategic plan it's addressing and supporting. And then DESI has standards for professional development, it's called High Quality Professional Development. And we put the DESI initiatives there too, what we are meeting. So it's very clear what we're concentrating on. When I am communicating about PD right now in my role, we are talking about what that PD is supporting. So it's communicated to everyone what that is. So it's communicated to staff, trying to get everything on here. It's communicated to staff through that agenda. It's communicated to the school committee through presentations. I make presentations after every PD. I include pictures so you can actually see things in action. And, let's see here, you also asked, so some topics that we had to be, you were talking about inclusionary. We are being very conscious, you know, you have only so much limited PD time, so you have to be very strategic with your professional development. So one thing that we know in Holliston that we need to approve upon is supporting students. And we do not have enough training in gender identity and how to address that and be comfortable with that. We are bringing in in January, there's a representative from DESI, from Safe and Supportive Schools, Landon Callahan, and he's coming back, I think, for the third time to help us kind of walk through that and navigate that. A lot of our teachers, especially our wellness teachers, are struggling with how do they deliver that gender identity standards within the curriculum. So we're offering that support. I gave you another example of inclusive PD with, you know, that how we were addressing bias and bigotry and everything like that. You were talking about same language, I wrote down here. I think it's important, right now I'm on our, we had an equity audit, and now I'm on the Equity Steering Committee. Our Director of Social Emotional Learning and Equity is running that. I'm just on that committee as a participant. And he's doing a phenomenal job on really getting common language, but more importantly, common understanding. So that common language and common understanding the principals are sharing out, is communicated to staff, and we're also sharing it with the community. So everybody's on the same page. So when somebody from the district is saying this, they mean this. So there's no misunderstanding between any party. Also, how else would it be communicated? Talking about the Some More newsletters again, the chats, school committee meetings. I'd also like, I saw an incredible offering that you have here with students making like videotapes. I would love to have students talk about how that language is communicated and shown as being evident in their classrooms, right? That's very powerful, doing something like that. And then posting all of the PD on the website, so it's transparent to all what we're doing here. How we're choosing to use that really valuable time and how what we're choosing to do is directly tied to our vision, our mission, our strategic plan. And we're also being compliant with what DESI's expecting us to provide for professional development to our teachers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay.
What strategies are you going to implement to support the employment of a more diverse faculty? And what do you plan to do to support? What initiatives have you implemented to maintain employee morale? My second part of that is, when you can't, when you can't offer monetary rewards financially, what other ideas do you have to keep talented teachers in our district?
This is a, I'm very excited and honored to be part of a lot of different statewide organizations and I'm lucky that my superintendent supports it. So I'm part of a lot of different networks. I regularly attend tri-county superintendents and assistant superintendents organization. I'm active in Athenas Assistant Superintendent's trainings, this is my third year in that. I'm active in job alikes for Accept Collaborative, Tech Collaborative, and I've been on statewide organizations. But we across the state in education are all struggling with all of attracting diverse candidates. We in our networks are trying to come together and partner and write letters and trying to encourage colleges to make programs and partner with colleges together as teams to see if we can make a difference in our community. We are working with a Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education, working on their job fairs, going to their trainings, doing all that. I think it's important. I think though, it's more important right now because of the lack of available staff right now in our state to think outside the box. So what do I mean by that? So in Holliston, we have some unique needs. We have a French immersion program. And it's really tough to find native French speakers. So our pre-K through 12-plus Unified Arts Curriculum Coordinator has been partnering with a French consulate out of Boston to try to see if they can help bring in people that are native speakers. So that's what I mean, like, trying to think outside the box. Let me give you another example. A lot of districts, which I would like to explore too, a lot of districts are trying to home-grow, for lack of a better word, their staff. So what I mean by that, supporting pairs to become teachers, right? If we're talking about retention of diverse staff and any staff, I think that there's a lot of puzzle pieces you need to put together for that. So you need to offer a strong New Teacher Institute program. There's a lot of planning into that. I am in charge of that for our district. You need to be very thoughtful about the time you have with them and the training you want to support them. I'm also in charge of the mentoring program. You need to make sure that you have a strong mentoring program. Your mentors are trained. So you are offering those new teachers that support that they are gonna get without judgment, without penalty, that they can ask those difficult questions they're not comfortable asking and feel successful in their roles. Another thing you asked me is, is bigger, it's systematic though. In order to retain people, you need to make them feel welcome. Part of that is, do they feel like they belong? Do they feel like they matter? You need to make people feel like they matter. I write hand, I hand-write thank-you notes. I asked when I was a principal, this is kind of corny, but it works, all of us have bad days. But we all get those like lovely emails from parents or other staff or colleagues or principals about what an awesome job they did. And we created smile files, the students created smile files for all the teachers. So any kind of note they had, they stuck it in their smile file. So they were having a really bad day, pull it out and read those. You make a difference, right? You matter. That keeps them going, right? It's also motivating when your, your leadership team knows you, knows things about you. I would go around to the schools, really get to know the teachers, know things about their families. I was in a district, I won't name who, I was so impressed by the superintendent, he knew so much about the staff. He knew personal stories, he had that connection to staff. I wanna do that same thing. All of those things, all of those components matter, right? Having those culture and climate opportunities for staff. Having them be able to have those fun activities together as a staff, to grow as a staff, to build that team within their buildings and make it fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is another lengthy question, I'm happy to repeat any parts of it if you want to.
Okay.
We have many community members and elected officials that flat-out reject our budget and the administration because they feel there is significant waste in the budget. They show that they don't understand how a 21st century education is delivered by saying, we didn't have this when I was in school and it was good enough for me. As a result, they also target people in the administration. So a few parts to this question. Have you been in this situation in the past? Could you tell me about it? Second part is, how do you explain to someone the difference in terms of what's required to deliver 21st century education versus 20th century education and the costs associated with it? And then the last part is, how do you address the concerns of these individuals to gain enough support to have a budget approved at town meeting as well as positive opinion of the school district and its employees?
Okay, so I'm gonna start to address those. Something I saw at one of my assistant- Something I saw at one of my assistant superintendents groups that was extremely powerful, that I definitely want to buy this poster. It was very impactful. It was a person named Jamie Volmer, and I think it was like how schools work, or how schools have changed, or something like that. It was this huge long poster, and it had what schools were like, you know, decades ago, and what the demands of a school were. And then it started, you saw, I mean, I couldn't see it because I was so far away, but you could see the print was getting smaller and smaller, and the list was just getting longer and longer. I think people do not have an understanding, truly, not everybody, about what the expectations are on a school district. So, part of that is communicating that, right? And, and physically talking about and walking people through that change. And I mean that through, again, those newsletters, those chats, and talking about what the demands are. A lot of people do not understand that we, as a public school district, are mandated by the state to teach curriculum standards. A lot of people that I've experienced that were having issues with things did not know, I was having conversations with them, that standards existed. So, I would bring up the standards, where are they found? What are we responsible for? You know, some of it is when people are pushing back, it's not knowing that we're responsible to do it, right? So, part of it is. And that needs to be brought out in a lot of different ways, again. It's through Samore communications, it's through superintendent's chats, it's having staff chats. There was something we did in Medway that was really powerful, which I think would be interesting, too. It kind of blew all of us away. A principal had us do that when it was STEM coach. She had us write down, we all, we were up by groups, and we had big blocks of a sticky notes paper, and we had to write down all the acronyms in public education that we could think of. And we just kept asking for more and more paper, and we're like, all right, does everybody even know what all these acronyms stand for? And we were educators, and we're like, no. And we're like, well, how do we expect the community to understand these? We need to educate them, right? Like, if we don't know it, how the heck are they going to know it? So, a lot of that, a lot of it is education. I'll give you an example of that. So, with the wellness standards changing, we, in Holliston, we've had a lot of pushback about the gender identity mandates and the standards. And in the upper elementary grades, we have parents opting to take their children out from school during those health lessons, that they know is going to happen. That is not an option. You can only opt out of the puberty lessons by law. There are laws out there. So, I worked with our, our pre-K through 12 plus Unified Arts Curriculum Coach, and we created a Samore newsletter, and it was really to educate people about the change. It was to provide the standards. It was to provide the laws in Massachusetts. It was to provide what DCE's guidances on Safe and Supportive Schools. It was to supply the school committee's policy on gender identity, on Safe and Supportive Schools, and other policies that we have that clearly shows the district believes in this, we are going to support this, we take this seriously, right? So, I think a lot of that is educating in a lot of different ways and addressing it in, I'm not a combative person, it's, I look at things that if somebody is really upset about something, I look at it as an opportunity to make sure that we have a common understanding of what's expected, right? And to kind of walk through that. I'm trying to think of another example. One thing that we have in, in Holliston is that parents want to know what is being taught and when it's being, what is being taught as well as when it's being taught. So, we have developed the curriculum team, and the principals looked at it. We developed a district-wide template, a understanding-by-design template to map our curriculum, and our Stage 1 documents are beginning to be published online. You can see it under Teaching and Learning, and that is being transparent with the community about what is being taught. So, they don't have to wonder, they have those questions answered. We will never publish any other stages because that's when you get into exactly how the teachers teach it, you know, and teachers need the autonomy, right? They need to be able to have that choice of how to teach that standard. And then also, another part of the curriculum map is all the assessments. We're not going to give the assessments online for students to access, right? But, that's another example of communicating with the, with the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you, how do you ensure that the curriculum taught is up to date and evidence-based? What tools would you use to assess its efficacy?
Right. Well, I'm kind of living this right now. So, we are having, we're currently living without dated curriculum. Part of it is developing the process. So, we developed a curriculum review cycle that the school committee knows about. So, it's published on our website, it's very clear, it's been communicated to parents, to everybody. These are the areas that we're reviewing and when. Also, on the website is our curriculum review process, and what we use is a collaborative process. This process is based on Holliston used to have a policy, and it was a little outdated. And since then, DCE has created a curriculum implementation guide. It's a little hefty, it's like 160-some pages. So, we pared it down and Hollistonized it and created a very collaborative process on how to do a curriculum review. It's been very transparent, and we have evidence that to the community through school committee presentations that the three curriculum coordinators talk about. But also, we're hot and heavy in math curriculum review right now, and we had a math forum where the members of the committee, which are pre-K, preschool teachers, and we had high school teachers all the way through, they presented what we were doing as a committee. And part of that review process is identifying what, I'm talking about math, remember, so what the vision is for math instruction in Holliston? What do we see for in student engagement? We went through data together, we looked at our vertical and curriculum alignment, we looked at what gaps do we have? Okay, what resources are we looking? What do we need to fill in here? We looked at what student populations we need to meet. Remember, we have Montessori, we have French immersion, we have much more robust multi-language learners, we have special ed. All those were taken in consideration. And so, what we looked at is, we looked at curate-rated materials, and not to insult anybody, those are, those are teacher-rated materials, curricular resources, that they are rating on the usability, how teacher-friendly it is, how student-friendly it is, how it's tied to math standards. And so, we looked at those resources, and they chose resources from all those different components that we needed to pilot. They decided it, it was not top-down. They chose multiple different resources to pilot. The elementary school is currently in the midst of piloting two different resources. We are hoping to take a vote on January 31st on our PD Day for the recommendation we're going to bring forward to the superintendent as a committee, and that superintendent will bring it forward to the school committee of what they're recommending. It is a committee recommendation. It's not a Jony recommendation, it's not the curriculum coordinator's recommendation, it is teacher-vetted, it is their decision. Part of the expectation of being on this committee, if you are on this committee, you are going back to your colleagues, and you are having conversations about what resources you're piloting, and you're getting feedback from them, and you're bringing it back to the table at our meetings. This is being really successful. The high school is piloting one. The middle school, we are having a leveling discussion right now, so they're looking at piloting possibly two. And then, at the same time, we're looking at different diagnostic tools that we can use that partner with this curriculum. But, it's a process, it's being transparent, it's allowing teachers on that committee to shine, to present to the community. They are the content experts, and they are communicating to the community what their thoughts are, based on their expertise of teaching that subject and their knowledge of it, and what would be best for Holliston. So, that's really powerful to have all of that. I think I answered your question.
All right. I'd like to discuss how you would measure the performance of Groton Dunstable against other districts. There are many ways to compare a district or individual schools against other districts. Websites like U.S. News and World Reports, Great Schools, ranking in newspapers like the Boston Globe, M-Cast rankings, our own internal math and reading assessments, etc. Which rankings matter and which do not, and why? In GD, if one of our schools goes down in a ranking, such as one on a website or news outlet, some community members and school committee members get upset. And there's a perception that grows that the district is failing in academic performance under your leadership. How do you respond to this situation? Previous administration and school committee put together what we call market basket districts to whom we compare ourselves. These districts were chosen based on having the following similar metrics like DART, enrollment, percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged, percentage of students with disabilities, districts that are demonstrating similar growth in math in ELA per pupil spending expenditures. How aware are you of the strategy, and do you agree or disagree with the strategy?
Well, there are parts to that. Okay. Let's see. I think there's value in all of those rankings, and let me explain why. By looking at all of them, you can start to see clear patterns that are happening within a district, right? And areas that you can grow. We just did a, a data presentation, myself, the superintendent, and the Director of Technology and Instruction in December, and we included everything under the sun, and we have what you call market basket, we just call our comparable districts. We have our go-to districts that we compare to. Those are based on school committee input, on community, who they want to be compared to. That's what we have been, the community and the school committees communicated to us. We want to be looking at how we compare to them. So, we looked at NISH, we looked at Boston Globe, we looked at, what is it, Dog Digger, some interesting names there. You know, M-Cast, all of that. And you can see patterns, and from all of those, you can make recommendations from those. Not everything is valuable, but like, let me give you an example. News, U.S. News and World Report, there are some things I don't agree with, but it definitely brings out that we need to do a better job of offering opportunities for AP students to take tests, and to make sure that we're offering opportunities that they, they can score better on that, because that's part of the ranking there, right? So, it brings out areas that we need to work on. Agree with it or not, property values depend on rankings. And so, we have a responsibility to our community of to be respectful of that. I think what we need to do, and we do in Holliston, that's very important, you were talking about, let's see, I forgot to mention, I think you definitely need to look at student growth, though, too. You can't just compare yourself to other people. You need to look at how are our students growing, right? So, the student growth percentile is very important. What you need to do, though, is, no matter what our rankings are, you need to be very transparent about it. And if there's a drop, if there's a dip, if there's a deviation, okay, what happened? How do we think it happened? And what are we doing to address it? We need to communicate that publicly and in many different ways to the community, so they know we're taking it seriously, what are we doing about it? It could be that, you know, something changed, and we're explaining what the curricular change was. I'll give you an example. So, we, I know Groton Dunstable has Fontis and Pennell, Holliston had Fontis and Pennell before I got there. We have gotten rid of it. We only use the resources for the books. Sadly, it was a really tough decision because it was a big financial responsibility that we took on having that. But, we are doing a really good job, the principal's doing a really good job, and some of the other people are doing a good job of explaining how we're making the shift because there's a huge shift in the views of how we teach literacy to students, right? And we are explaining to the community how we're doing that in many different ways, and how we've changed our practice to do that. And you need to have honest conversations, but the more important thing is not only telling people what happened, but why you think it happened and what you're going to do about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the field of education is constantly changing. What methods do you use to keep up to date with the latest developments and issues in education? In your previous positions, how have you modified your approaches in response to these changes? Can you provide an instance where you effectively implemented a new educational trend or overcome a current obstacle in a school or educational district?
Sure. I've touched upon some of these. I feel like it's my moral and ethical responsibility as an instructional leader to keep informed. And how do I do that? So, I need to grow as a leader myself, and I need to put myself in situations where I'm learning and growing. So, I just completed my doctoral program in May of last year from the University of Hartford, and it was a cohort model, which I absolutely loved because it was really, it was in-person. We met every Thursday. I wouldn't get home till like 11 o'clock every Thursday night, but we had a lot of discourse and discussion about education, and I, I value that, I grow a lot from that. I have taken that into other groups I'm in. So, I told you, I'm in the Assistant Superintendent's Group for Athena, and I'm in Tech Collaborative, I'm in Accept Collaborative, I'm in tri-county organizations. But, what I love about those, they provide professional development for us, right? And we really struggle with some problems of practice and walk through those together. And I find that extremely valuable to talk to a peer about a problem that they've also had, and how, what strategies did they use to address it? At this level and superintendacy level, it's a very isolating position, and you have to strategically place yourself into areas where you are learning and growing as a leader and using those critical supports, those critical friends to help you get through that. Massachusetts is incredible at the superintendent's level and the assistant superintendent's level. I attend the conferences every summer, and I've gone to the MAS C conferences in the past. And it's, it's, I find it more refreshing than when I was at a principal going to conferences because I think people are just very sharing and brutally honest about what their struggles are, and kind of really trying to get feedback from their colleagues. And it's a really incredible environment, and I'm really lucky to have been involved in these organizations, that I have a lot of people I can just pick up the phone and call and say, hey, have you struggled with this? Have you gone through this? What did you guys do? So, I'm definitely keeping up on that. You had also asked, let me give you another example, though. When I was a principal, I was on the Massachusetts School Committees, what is it? MSAA, Massachusetts School Administrators Association, again, acronym, right? So, I was the Ed Policy Chair for four years, and there I did a lot of education for myself about how leaders can impact positive change at the legislative and the state level. So, I'm a big advocate for that still, too. You had asked about things I've implemented. When I was a principal, I ran, I was part of, an active part of a principal group in Peter Sam, and then I ran principal groups when I was in Gil Montague. And going to those groups actually inspired the idea. And going to those groups actually inspired the idea for that fluid block schedule. I told you about literacy block schedule, right? I had never heard of that, so that I knew about from that. I never knew about Influence 100, the statewide organization that we're really combating inequities in our own school districts. I learned about that through this organization. I have a huge network. We have two different cohorts that were together that there's assistant superintendents in it, there's principals, there's a lot of different roles. But we contact each other about struggles that we're having with equities within our district and what they've done to do it. It's a great resource to have. Give you another idea that came out of going when I was a secondary principal, an elementary school principal, too. I really learned about restorative justice. That is... Restorative discipline and restorative justice. That is mandated now in the state of Massachusetts, but it was not then. We implemented in our schools at the elementary school level. We had forms that seems very strange. But the K through 2 students would draw a picture about an infraction or a problem they had or a discipline issue they had and they would have to tell me about it. We would have a conversation then, what would you change and why? And if they couldn't figure that out, I would work with them to figure it out. The grades 3 through 6 students would be able to write about it and we'd have that thoughtful conversation. There still might be consequences, right, for their actions. But we had those learnable moments and what strategies could they use differently next time, right? When I was in Gilmonogu, we were a restorative justice school. The middle school had, that was already existing when I got there. It was incredible because there was an incredible peer mediation program at the middle school and it was peer-led. That was extremely powerful. There were some times that it couldn't be used. But there's disagreements, little disagreements. Talking about empowering students, they were helping their peers work out that conflict, right? At the high school level, everything was restorative justice. So those are practices I learned about, being out there with colleagues at different levels and really tapping into their knowledge and their expertise and their visions and then bringing it back to the district I'm in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you've spoken a lot this evening about how you seek community feedback. I'm wondering if you can speak to, once you receive that feedback, how does that then inform your decision-making process? And as a part of that response, can you describe a situation where you may have made a decision that was contrary to public opinion, but that you felt it was in the best interest of students? How did you go about making that decision and then defending it?
Okay. I'm going to give you two examples. And I already explained the whole anti-bias training in Gilmonogu, but I did get pushback from parents on that. So I had to defend that, why we were doing that. I did tell you guys that component of that. And I said, these are the core beliefs of this school. This is our school community and we are going to uphold those beliefs. It is district beliefs, it's school beliefs. And any time a student chooses not to follow those, there are going to be consequences and that will not change. If you have different beliefs in your home, those are your home beliefs, but at school, these are our expectations and there are consequences for those. Another example I can give you is we have had a lot of opinions in my role. Different parents have reached out to me. Let me kind of preface this. I'm located in Metro West. There's another community called, I won't say it, but there's another community in Metro West that got inundated with community members coming out trying to ban books in their libraries. So students, people in Holliston were concerned about whether that's going to happen here. We need to have a process. We developed off of my colleagues' process. We collaboratively developed a school committee policy as well as procedures. What steps need to be taken to go through this? So let me tell you some highlights of it. So there's a process. If a parent or a community member has a concern about a book that we are offering either in the classroom or in the library, there is a form that we need to fill out. This is all on our website. You can reach it to our teaching and learning website or the school committee page. But what happens first is they start with the school principal having a conversation. If they don't feel like it got resolved, they have to fill out a form, a very explicit form, that they have to answer. Have they read the whole book or just sections of the book? What are they disagreeing with? What do they have an issue with and why? They have to be very explicit. We have made very clear, if that form is not filled out and if it's not signed, it cannot be anonymous, it will not be considered. If it's moved forward that there, we are going to investigate this, the books are not pulled from the shelves. There's a lot of organizations, national organizations, that is their goal, just to challenge books and sensing that they're going to be pulled and not accessible to students. So we have publicly said, these books will not be pulled. And then what happens is, I have to chair the committee in my role right now. We have, depending if it's an elementary school challenge, we would have the elementary school principal. I would have the the appropriate district curriculum coordinator. I would have teachers there. We would review that complaint, for lack of a better word, brought forward. We would all have to read the book ourselves. We would make a recommendation to what we feel. We also have made the commitment, a lot of these, we would want to reach out to the author themselves. What was the intent? What was the age group this was written for? What do you think feels appropriate? We would make a determination that we'd bring the recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent looks at our recommendation, decides. If the superintendent agrees with us and the party appeals it, it goes to the school committee. The school committee gets to look at that, but it becomes, if it's at the school committee level, it becomes a public document on our website. And it becomes, if the school committee's deliberating about it, the video of that specific school committee is tagged in that report. So it's a very transparent process. And it's also, if a person makes a challenge, you cannot challenge that same book within a three-year period. So it's very spelled out and very clear. There are people that that is not supported by. You know, they're having issues. We're trying to do what's right for students. We're trying to give them access to books they might want, right? And they have every opportunity to get that access to that book.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you might have answered part of my question, but I'll give it to you anyways and see if maybe you have anything else you want to add to it.
All right.
Tell us about your experience working in the curriculum area. That might include identifying a need to revise curriculum, to align with DESI guidance and research, implementing a new curriculum or assessing the curriculum that's already in place. What did you learn from these experiences? And what would you use where you have learned in our district? Or how would you use what you learned in our district?
Okay. I'm going to give you an example I have not given you. I gave in the other interviews I had today. When I was in Gilmonogu, it's a community that there are going to be a lot of students that do not have the opportunity to go to college, are going to stay in the community and are going to work. At the same time, I don't remember, two miles, three miles down the road, there is the VOTEC school that we were in direct competition to and we were bleeding students to the VOTEC school. We knew that we needed to do changes in our curricular offerings to maintain our students and to offer something more exciting. We knew we could not compete on certain levels with that VOTEC school. They had gotten huge grants and had these incredible facilities for like veterinary science and all these other things that we knew we could not do or things that had a lot of equipment that we knew we did not have the space or the money for. So we decided to go the Innovation Pathways Grant way. It is a DESI-sponsored grant. So what we do, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but I'll just quickly explain it. You partner with Mass Hire, your county's Mass Hire organization. Mass Hire has to output a report that what are the biggest job needs in your county? So it directly ties to the job market in the county. And we looked at the two highest needs. The highest need in Franklin County at the time was healthcare and social assistance. The second highest need was advanced manufacturing. So we wrote a grant for Innovation Pathways for healthcare and social assistance first that offered a wide variety. It could be all the way from working in a nursing home, all the way to becoming a doctor and everything in between. You know, EMT. And our second year, we wrote a successful grant for advanced manufacturing. And both of those were really incredible because not only do you get classes that are strategic in those areas and that really hone in in those areas, but both of those areas, they were CPR certified and the advanced manufacturing, are you going to forget about it? It's not LEEDs, it's LEEDs? It's a certification for manufacturing and I always want to say...
Six Sigma? No?
No, it's something, it begins with an L. I apologize. But it's a certification that you can use when you have a leg up and you're going into manufacturing, right? So what this does, there's all these different classes they take, but it's really powerful because all along the way, they are in opportunities to grow as a student. So they had to apply for the program. They had to do a resume for the program. They had to be interviewed for the program, okay? So there's a lot of skills in that. Then if they were accepted into the program, we did a lot of just outside community people coming in that had occupations in those areas that could talk to that and expose our students to different opportunities in those areas because there was an awareness, like, what can I do with this? You know, like, I don't even know, right? But we also invited all of our student body to that, too, to expose them to that opportunity. The most beautiful thing about this program, the senior year, they have a 100-hour practicum off-site with a business or an organization. The manufacturing one, I was so excited about because we were partnering with manufacturers. I went out in the community, made that partnership. And they said, listen, if they come, because they have to do the internship, if they do a good job, we're going to hire them. That's a huge deal. It's giving them a huge leg up. So we saw that as a need. The bleeding started dropping off. Students stayed because they knew of the opportunity coming up. Remember, we were grade 6 through 12. So they could see those opportunities coming up. So we were not getting as many students leaving after 8th grade. They were choosing to stay because of the exposure, career exposure, the class exposure, the job exposure, opportunities they were getting. A huge, huge win for the students there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How would your particular leadership style make our teachers feel supported and help you to identify and address their concerns? And how does your leadership style foster relationships that lead to improved retention of our valued and talented staff members? If we were to ask families, students, and teachers who have worked with you in the past, what would they say was your biggest impact on the culture of the school community?
I think I talked a little bit about this, but my leadership style is really empowering others to shine. I think that's what makes a good leader, is building the capacity of your other leaders within a district and giving them opportunities to shine. I love seeing that. My, I hope I've explained and shown that I'm a collaborative leader. I look for feedback from staff, from outside community members and take that feedback and implement it. If I don't, I explain why. I'm transparent. I communicate. But I also look for the fun and how can I make it inviting for all staff and all students to be in a building, a district, or a community? I think that people that I work with would say that. I think that my central fellow administrators would say that I'm very collaborative with them. I'm in their offices all the time, asking for feedback from them. I'm learning to grow with them. I want to learn from them. They have their expertise. I want to tap into that expertise. There's a lot of value there and we can grow together. We're more powerful if we're together. So those are my leadership styles. And I think that parents, especially, and my role's a little bit different because the superintendent takes the lead in it, but when I was a principal, the families would say that I communicated a lot with them through regular newsletters. It was bi-weekly for the community. Also, I put in there a lot of community activities that had nothing to do with the school that supported our vision, such as library events or such as wellness activities the students could participate in, something like that. So I looked at it as a community newsletter, not just a school newsletter. And people saw that. One thing that people would say about me is that I... The positions I've taken, the community I've been in, I become a part of the fabric of the community. What do I mean by that? I attend festivals. I attend plays. I attend sporting events. I want to be seen. I want to be seen as approachable. People feel comfortable talking to me and I'm able to elicit honesty and good feedback from people, which is critical to do any job I've ever had. I can only get better and I need to get honest feedback. I take feedback. All I ask is be respectful. And I will take any feedback you have. And I will use it to become better. So, thank you.
All right. Well, believe it or not, that is the last of our questions.
Okay. I've made it.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We are planning on regrouping on the 24th where we hope to make a decision. Assuming we make a decision, we then would go into, make an offer and go into contract negotiations with the expectation to announce on the 31st our final choice.
Wonderful. I would just like to thank you for the opportunity and I would be very honored to be the leader here in Groton Dunstable.
All right. I just want to remind everybody, the survey, the feedback, please, please, please get that information in by Monday noon so we can, as a school committee, digest all of the good feedback that we're going to get. And on that note, we will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.